Meeting into order. Thank you for joining us, folks, and we will entertain motions.
I am moved to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing institutional negotiations of a memorandum of understanding that Ithaca Principals and Directors Association and the Teachers Association, a petition brought against the district by a parent pursuant to section three ten of the education law and matters pertaining to the work performance and tenure eligibility of administrators and teachers.
Second.
Moved by Maura, second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Including Jill raising her hand. We're making pride. Uh, we will try to be efficient with our time. We expect to be back here right around seven PM or a little bit before. So we'll see folks after we engage executive session. Um, I will ask my board colleagues to bear with me as we try to make some modifications to the agenda. Um, up next, uh, we have agenda item four point one, um, and agenda item four point two, which is board responses. I think I'm asking humbly that we keep those and I'm asking that we would then move agenda item eleven point two, which is um, a Hara Shonie flag presentation and move that to be agenda item four point three, and then with our student reps of four point four and four point five. And then one last modification, if we could move, if it's where the board agrees to move um, agenda item nine point one, which is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, and make that the new agenda item eleven point two in board business. So pulling the minutes out of the consent to put as a school business item.
Second.
To me, yes, to turn it to low. So does any, I need to clarify that again for board members. So yeah, that was a weak end that a motion bless you. Second by Maura, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much for your support and do me the favor and help keeping me uh, in check about what we're doing with our agenda moving forward. So with that being said, we'll continue on with our agenda, which is agenda item four point one, which is a public comment period, and we have one person who has uh, signed up. And uh, I will most likely mispronounce your name, and for that I apologize. Is it? Varun and last name?
Yes.
Miss, thank you very much. Varun, you have uh, three minutes to talk to us and uh, if you would use one of the microphones so we could pick it up, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Varun Misra. I'm a junior at Ithaca High School. Um, I'm here this evening to request your support for my petition to recognize the significance of Diwali, which is a Hindu festival. Diwali is a day of celebration at Hindu temples and a time for Hindu, Sikh, Jain, and Buddhist American families to gather to small lamps around their homes and pray for knowledge, peace, and universal well-being. As a new student in Ithaca, I was surprised to see that this holiday is not celebrated in the Ithaca City School District. My old school in Newtown, Pennsylvania, and numerous other schools all across the United States recognize and celebrate Diwali. This is especially more relevant since a recent passing of Legislative Session Assembly Bill on June eleventh, twenty twenty-three, that establishes the Diwali School Holiday in certain qualifying school districts to commemorate the Hindu Festival of Lights in the New York State. I'm going to read relevant excerpts from the bill. Hindu Festival of Light School Holiday shall be a school holiday for any or all schools in a qualified school district where the Board of Education or trustees determine such schools have a significant South Asian population. A qualified school district, for purposes of the section, shall include a city school district of a city having an Asian population equal to or greater than seven and one-half percent. For reference, Ithaca's Asian population percentage is seventeen percent, which far exceeds a seven percent that is required. Um, I also had many signatures that support my cause for Ithaca students at Ithaca High School, and I look forward to your support and feedback on helping this cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board responses.
Question?
Yes.
You said seven percent of.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
The, the, it said, the Asian population equal to or greater than seven and one half. Then, Ithaca's Asian population is seventy percent, five thousand and seven.
It was, so it was just Asian, not South Asian in particular. Okay, thank you.
Additional board responses, comments, questions?
So just the bill, the, why, if are they, if I don't have as, it should be the day off?
Um, well, I just want to like, if the bill says it's a holiday, I'm just, I just really want Diwali to be recognized or just, yeah, and if it could, to like, and promote diversity and. Yes, I also have.
Can you say a little more about that? Like how we want it to be recognized or what that would look like?
Yeah, so like, maybe just like, not, not only having like, maybe not having a day off if that's not possible, maybe just like, having it in like a newsletter or somehow just like recognizing and including like, the Hindus and everyone who celebrates it. So yeah, I don't know.
Well, um, thank you very much. Thank you because it's from the young people and the young people's heart that changes, change happens. So thank you for being bold enough to come forth and get this petition and for support. I know that um, it was in May two thousand twenty-one or twenty, twenty twenty-one, that there was some adjustment to the calendar where um, Diwali was added as one of the um, recognized and, and it's on the calendar since then. And because we had it was a, I think it was a student group, elementary students that went through the whole listing of holidays. Why isn't this recognized? Why isn't that? So it's on our academic calendar. Um, the legality of what celebration, I know um, due to the different, maybe some of the cultures within the different schools and all, we, as well as throughout the schools district, that we may not celebrate specific, if it's religious holidays and all, but I don't know the full legality of that. But I, I do want to recognize and just to reinstate that it is on the academic calendar as current.
Um, I'll also offer again, uh, thank you for coming to speak to us. Um, uh, I think as my colleague Karen said, um, we're all aware that it is uh, young folks who make change in the world, uh, and push us to rethink some of the things that we've been doing for quite some time. Um, yes, uh, our calendar is a process that happens um, uh, annually. I mean, it's a calendar, so we'll be having this conversation again in terms of what um, could happen, what it could look like. I would like to invite you to have a conversation when we start looking at next year's calendar.
Sounds good.
And what does it mean? It is listed along with other holidays. We made sure, the festival of the, um, you know, the high holidays uh, for Judaism. Um, and there are some legalities about recognizing or celebrating or a day off for religious holidays versus non-religious holidays. Um, but there's always ways in which we can do things better. So let's have a conversation. We'll, we'll follow up when it's the time to look at our calendar for next year. And in the meantime, welcome any additional recommendations and please do give the petition to the board clerk, so we can keep it on record and put it into the minutes of the, the meeting today.
Thank you.
Just want to, I mean, if Dr. Brown or Lily could, maybe just walk through, I mean, recognition can mean a lot of things, right? It could be an activity planned with the, if it's part of a student group, maybe either you could just walk, walk our guest through how it might go about achieving recognition through some kind of student organized activity?
We'll tag him on this one. And I think you're going to see some, another perfect example of what you're asking a little later with the presentations, but uh, we can share some thoughts.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lily Talcett, and I get to serve as the Deputy Superintendent of Schools. Um, thanks so much for inviting me down. So there's a number of ways, I would say, that our uh, community as an Ithaca City School District recognizes and, and supports uh, students and staff and families um, in terms of religious and other celebrations, right? There is certainly a separation of church and state, right? We've all, we've all heard of this. Um, and the, in the eyes of the law, there are some holidays that have been termed secular, right? There's a great deal of case law, et cetera, um, that's sort of, that's sort of gone through that. All that being said, um, you know, we really have been working, I would say, probably over the last fourteen years to ensure that um, folks in our communities who represent a wide range of identities, religious, ethnic, sexual orientation, gender identity, right? Really feel seen and heard, right, and are a part of the community. So um, you know, for example, in my first grade classroom at Enfield, um, we would always learn about through an academic lens, um, a wide number of holidays, right? Um, and, and so that's certainly possible and continues, I would say, in a great number of our classrooms. I would say especially at elementary. Um, a big shout out to Barb Bergman, who's here. She's a family liaison for Ithaca High School. For every um, non-Christian holiday that comes up, Barb sends an email out to the entire Ithaca High School community, letting folks understand what the holiday is, right? And what are some of the ways in which some of our students and our staff and families celebrate it. Um, and some, even sometimes some ways to recognize um, and what, you know, you may expect, right? Like, so if, if folks are fasting, you just expect that, you're going to treat that as super normal and be super respectful um, in relationship to that. Um, some of our schools, um, uh, again, we have to, we have to keep that separation of church and state, right? So there's um, there are some more um, grade level or subject level, um, not necessarily celebrations, but um, informational sessions, um, where folks can gather some more information, you know, understand more clearly everything from international nights to um, more um, school-based or school, you know, during the eight to two time um, as well. So those are, those are some of the things um, that um, I would say the school district engages in. Uh, was that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Any other board responses? We're looking forward to the conversation. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Uh, we will then continue with our revamped agenda, which is now agenda item four point three, which is a discussion on the Hara Shonie flag. So uh, we'll have Ms. Talcett come back down and join us or a group of folks come and join us as well.
This is not one of these segments. I don't, there's the news. Yes.
I, I go in there. I'm so sorry. I'm going to move my stuff.
All right, folks, welcome. If we, I would presume this may be part of the presentation, but if we could introduce ourselves to make sure it could also be in the minutes, that would be fantastic as well.
I'm Lily Talcett, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools.
I'm Paul Hyland. I teach American history at Ithaca High School.
I'm Brenna Lucio Babassi, and I am an eleventh grader at Ithaca High School.
My name is Navina Clark. I'm Dakota, specifically Mid-Atewaketin Sioux, and I'm a twelfth grader at Ithaca Senior High School.
My name is Ryan Rushing. I am a senior at Ithaca High School, and I am Mohawk Hura Noshoni.
I'm Waheh Hawey Hall. I go by Hawey. I'm Ryan Rushing's mother, and I am also Mohawk Hura Noshoni.
And today we are going to be discussing the why and what of flying the Hura Noshoni flag in Ithaca City School District. So why is this important? Traditionally, we fly up to three flags in a place, the country, the state, and the local jurisdiction. However, we as Ithacans are on unceded lands. In flying the Hura Noshoni flag, we would not merely demonstrate allyship and show support. We would additionally do the necessary step of acknowledging a sovereign nation's rightful lands with a unique culture and unique regulations. There we go. Okay. What does the Hura Noshoni flag represent? The flag, the Hura Noshoni depicts the Hiawatha belt, traditionally created using Wampum shells. So during the time of the great five warring, of the five warring nations, um, the great peacemaker who um, who carried the creator's word, um, listened to, used Hiawatha and the agreement was sent by um, the peacemaker to unite the nations, um, and that person is Hiawatha. Um, Tarahoe, the Anandaga leader, uh, was, who would not accept peace, and Jiggo Sahay, the mother of nations, the first clan mother. Um, and the Wampum signified the peace that was agreed upon, um, and the creation of the Hura Noshoni Confederacy, um, which some might be familiar, is called the Iroquois, but it is, it is the Hura Noshoni Confederacy. Um.
This is Anandaga Lake. Uh, Anandaga Lake is both northwest and also adjacent to what we call Syracuse. This here is sacred ground. It is here, on Anandaga Lake, that the five nations who, as Navi said, were once warring, came together, and they, along with the Creator, uh, and the Peacemaker, and Hiawatha, they formed the Great Law of Peace. The Great Law of Peace was, as Navi also said, um, it was crafted using the sacred beads of Wampum, and it tells the story of this Confederacy. It is here, at Anandaga Lake, that the oldest continuous democracy in the world was formed. We here in Ithaca, on Gaia Kono land, are on the land of the oldest continuous democracy in the world. This is a Confederacy, a democracy that was created not through victory in war, but in the rejection of it. Not because they forced their opponent to put down their weapons, because they laid down their own. We as a country, as the United States, are not only on unceded land, and we in New York are on unceded land, and we in Ithaca are on unceded land, but we can learn a lot from the people whose land we are on. This is the Hiawatha belt. As you can see, it is crafted using Wampum. It means this. There are the four rectangles on the outside. Each of them symbolizes the four of the five nations. And in the middle is Anandaga, represented by uh, the white pine tree, the tree of symbolizing peace. This flag is more than just a symbol. It's a story. It is the story of, as I've said, the oldest democracy in the world, and it is the story of the people whose land we are on.
For me, coming to this district was a huge cul- culture shock. I came from a district where my culture was woven into the threads of the community. You could see bits of my culture written on the walls with words in the traditional language, in the tiles on the floor, which were in the patterns of the traditional flags or, I guess, belts. And so when I came here to a district that is on one of the reservations, it was very shocking for me to realize that they do a land acknowledgement, but even with the land acknowledgement, it is not every day. And there is no lasting representation of my culture or my people who have lived here and who were forced out of here. And it was surprising to see that it wasn't like, on, I guess, a big scale. Because at Dwi, when we moved here and they learned we were Native American, the building principal asked if there was some way they could help make us feel seen, accommodated. And we provided a flag, and because they could not fly it outside, they put it up inside. And there is a Hura Noshoni flag in Dwi. And I think flying a flag here would be a great platform to build off of and to start to kind of represent a group that is typically not well represented and at times not represented at all. And I just think this would be a great way to start.
So this is our recommendation to the board, that the board adopt a resolution to fly the Hura Noshoni flag on the additional flagpole of Ithaca High School and below the American flag at all other IC SD school buildings.
I use silence oftentimes to let people process, right, to let it sit, to take it in. So I think first and foremost for the presentation, again, we just said, it's hearing from students that uh, is what the board needs to be doing as open as possible to to make decisions. So we'll begin. Board colleagues, reactions, questions, any responses?
I mean, I feel very uh, moved by the presentation. That was really great. Um, um, I wasn't aware of a lot of the things that, that you presented. Um, and I appreciate you guys coming in and sort of um, illuminating some of this one. So thank you.
Other board, Maura?
So a while back, a few months ago, I guess, a student, earlier that I was together, uh, came to make the same suggestion that we fly. It was, it was, it was me, yeah. Okay. I don't know, sorry. But um, and uh, at the time, we had some discussion following it. And the discussion involved some brainstorming about what else could we do? Um, because a couple of people suggested that it, it felt like it might be performative to just say, okay, let's put the flag up. Um, definitely might do something more meaningful or substantial. Uh, your presentation has really affected my thinking about this stuff, particularly uh, what you've said about the meaning of the flag, um, the flag not being just a symbol. And I think that that was part of the concern that some people expressed before, oh, you know, we'll, we'll adopt this symbol, but it wouldn't really have something. But what you said about um, how a flag is, is a story and a very powerful story. And also the tradition of flying flags that represent, they represent land, the coun- country, and were on the land of the Hura Noshoni. So it seems particularly appropriate that the flag be, be, so about my, my thinking, I moved by this also, particularly at this time, what you said about a flag representing a rejection of war is particularly powerful right now. Uh, so my, my thinking has really been broadened and needed by the presentation. I very appreciate.
Other board members?
And thank you all, and especially thank you to the students for the courageous stance that you're taking into continuing this because it started last spring and you've continued. And I like what was said, this flag is more than a symbol, it's a story. And um, which I truly appreciate. We know back in twenty twenty, there were three pandemics, the health pandemic, the um, the um, um, race pandemic, and the political pandemic, as I call it. Um, and as a result of that, everyone was joining forces, let's do a land acknowledgement, and let's do a statement, let's get this out, let's get that. And quite a few places, quite a few organizations have dwindled, and some have, are still deliberating, well, what are we going to do different? When I saw your presentation, I was like, I was wowed. This is the difference there, to educate every one of us, because this is the land that we're on and we're occupying, and therefore we need to acknowledge and do something and do it. Well, of course, we have to look in legalities of doing it. But thank you very much for bringing this forth to the next step to educate us. And, and I've always seen the um, Hura, Hura Noshoni flag and didn't know that the different tribes and all connected to it. And was even speaking with someone um, earlier today about it, and she was telling me about the flag that's representing the different tribes in South Dakota from where she's from too. So this is where that education starts and continues to just, so it could um, continue to trickle along so that we all could become more knowledgeable with the, with you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Elder?
Yes, I am. I am part of it. One thing I really discussed previously is that when I want to, by trying to do this thing, step into other. So I heard you all say that we represent the Mohawk, but there are the five tribes. Is there a representation for this from the other tribes? In particular, some of us know about some of the tension right at me right now within the community.
And I'm not asking you all to speak to that, that's complicated, but it is a thing.
And I'm not asking you all to speak to that, that's complicated, but it is a thing between the the tribal mothers and others. Another question I have because I heard it brought up, I wasn't aware that this land was actually a reservation. In fact, it's my understanding that Kuyugas are not a nationally recognized tribe here locally because of some of the dispersal. So educate us. We need to be schooled more on how we can do this. What's that saying? No good deed goes unpunished. I don't want to be punished for this because it's not going to be us. They're going to come for the babes.
So the Haudenosaunee Confederacy originally consisted of the five nations, each being represented, which is what you saw. About two hundred, just over 200 years ago, the Tuskerora Nation also joined. So it actually represents six nations, which was given the name Iroquois Confederacy, which actually is French and means snake eater, not what we refer to ourselves at all. We're the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, which means people of the longhouse. Kuyuga being one of those nations, there often is internal squabbles amongst, and it's a difference between the traditional council, which is, they reference Taradaho. Taradaho is a traditional title given down, given to people. It's not an elected position. It's put up through kind of community members, other council members. So what's happening at Gaya Kono, the Gaya Kono people, is a difference between the traditional people and Clint Halfpound, who's trying to gain power through being recognized as part of a representative for the Kuyuga nation. And although he's not put in through their traditional means, this happens a lot within our territories. Sovereignty versus federal recognition. Kuyugas, Gaya Konos, all of the six nations of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy are not only state recognized, but federally recognized as well. So the internal squabbles, the same thing happened at Oneida years ago when Ray Halbitter kind of stepped into the role, right? That he was a different person as opposed to traditional council. He gained his kind of access to titleship, to put it politely, through having money and power. And so that's kind of, I think, what you're referencing. This flag doesn't necessarily condone or ally with anybody. It's representing more than anything the traditional values of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy. Some of our nations have gone into accepting federal funding and there are some that have that alliance. But this flag specifically represents the traditional values of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, separate from all of those politics.
I would be remiss if we did not recognize the work of Mr. Healan and your partner, the work that you were doing to teach history in a much more nuanced and complex way. And I'm greatly appreciative and I think we're examining some of that here today. Can you tell me your name again? Yes.
Ryan Rushi.
So Ryan may not remember, but last, I'm sure you do. Last spring, I was giving a presentation during Ithaca High School's Social Justice Week. And Ryan, as soon as I was done, said, yeah, yeah, all that was good, but what's up with this flag that we're going to do? So we're talking about the conversation that began last March. I absolutely did that. We were talking about a conversation that began last March and through determination, every month or so, writing Dr. Bradwell, what, you know, you said you'd follow up, you said you'd follow up. And so for me, it's, I wanted to make sure that we highlight that for two reasons. One, that change and progress is often slow, but requires a determination to make things happen. So here we find ourselves six months later, having a much more in-depth conversation than we began when you approached me there. So I'm greatly appreciative of that as well. I would be remiss if I didn't do a little bit of a plug for Ithaca College. And by that, I mean on November 9th, Ithaca College is holding an event called the Gaya Kono and the Land to recognize the modernity of which people are, right? That we have Gaya Kono citizens, Gaya Kono students at Ithaca College. We'll be handing out copies of Kurt Jordan's book, the proceeds of which go to fund local Gaya Kono initiatives. And we'll be having a follow-up conversation about the Gaya Kono Learning Project, which is a project which is trying to preserve the Gaya Kono language. And I would invite folks to join us. We'll make sure we send that out. I mentioned all that to say that this is a very timely conversation, even while it's late. Right? So this is something that we could have addressed and should have addressed. It needs to be addressed. And so what I would ask the board to do is to consider the resolution language that's here. We will follow up and if it's the want and will of the board, we will put it on the next agenda for discussion and/or a vote and see where that leads us. In the meantime, it will allow board members to ask additional questions to make sure we get any answers that we need about any legalities. We know that there, but the way in which the resolution is phrased, from my understanding, addresses some of those, all of those legalities, to be honest, as I understand it. And so folks may not think there's as many laws about flying a flag on public property, but there's significant case law about what that is. But the way in which the resolution is written addresses it again, as I best understand it. So I am also deeply appreciative. Again, this is timely. And I hope the board is willing to engage in a conversation about the resolution at our next board meeting.
Yeah, I think Sean just, you alluded to some conversations that I haven't been a part of. Maybe we could just get a summary of that from Kate before the next meeting or a review of this to just, at least to bring me up to speed if I could, please.
Absolutely. In fact, we'd be happy. I'm sure, Lily, you've probably been steeped in this already. You may have some of these information, some of these questions. Now, I don't know if this is a time it's appropriate or.
Yeah, so the board can always adopt, can adopt this resolution, right? Or any other resolution to fly a particular flag. It has to be below the American flag as per the law. Or it can be on another flagpole. At Ithaca High School, there are, there's more than one flagpole, which is why the resolution reads that way. And then at other schools, we have just one. It, you know, if you have questions specifically about free speech, I can certainly send that out in relationship to, you know, what BSNK, which is our law firm, has indicated and how it's fully in line with.
If that's happened already, then.
Yeah.
Okay, that predates me, but.
Yes and no, but it may be a good thing for us to redis, you know, have a different conversation about. Because I think, again, a lot of folks are even unaware that the law mandates and dictates how we fly flags on school spaces. And so that's a conversation that I do think is worthwhile. Doesn't mean we have to spend a significant amount of time on it, but we can raise some questions, send them to our legal team, make sure that we're prepared to answer those and proceed from there. So we wanted to make sure that the board had a chance to hear why it's important, why it would be a good idea, and then for us to consider a resolution for. Unfortunately, I don't believe our next board meeting is until November 14th. So we're three weeks away and for that I apologize, but this is the pace of progress at times. But hopefully we'll keep moving forward. Any other questions?
Yeah, just as we move forward on this piece of information, I'd like to have is where would we obtain 12 or more flags?
There's actually a handful of Haudenosaunee-owned businesses that produce these flags. So there's a few different options and I'm happy to give you a list of.
Great if we could have, not necessarily guidance from young people, but from mom. Perhaps we can get some insight on what some other organizations have done to create a series of steps beyond the performative. What I would hate to see is the flag go up and then the students feel even more marginalized because nothing's happening.
The academic community won't let that sit. There are times when our support and affirmation has to be performative. There is a performance. All acts are performative. And so what I hear my colleagues saying is they don't want to stop there. But let's not act as if the performance of allyship, of co-abolitionist behavior isn't important as well. And so yes, it is a performative act. Let's be real. And it's an act that has meaning at the same point in time. So I'm going to step out of faculty member role, get back into board president role.
And there you have the difference between an academic and an attorney. Should you decide which way to go?
We can talk about income later. Thank you, good folks. Greatly appreciate your time. Very much appreciate it. Thank you very much. I will give it a minute just for the room to settle as we move around for folks just soon.
What's the conference? And I see, what was it?
A few things.
I know that's five days before our next meeting, but we'll have ways of doing this.
Thank you, good folks. And continuing with hearing from student voices and pushing us to do things that are much more inclusive ways, let's begin with our student reps. I think last time we began with Ithaca High School, so we'll begin with LACS. Oh, you already chose.
We would love to pass it off, you guys.
Good evening. Unfortunately, McCund and Lucene couldn't make it today. They're seniors, they're busy. We forgive them. But we'll start off with just a few announcements. The varsity boys soccer is going to sectional championships in just two days. And the varsity girls tennis had a win in Goshen, New York yesterday, placing us within the top eight high school teams of the state. Tomorrow, October 25th, the IHS Music Department presents a combined concert featuring the bands, choirs, and orchestras titled Waterworks. The concert begins at 7:30 PM in Cult Auditorium. One thing we talked to Mr. Trumble about recently was about the changes in school lunches this year. Many students and staff have spoken out about the decrease in food quality and options compared to last year, just at IHS. We heard, we have heard that there is a newly developed system of preparing the lunch at Pointon Middle School and then transporting it over to Ithaca High School. We're not exactly sure about that, but students are also disappointed with the lack of snack options available in the cafeteria for purchase when they need some extra food. Additionally, the vending machines are locked during the day due to contracts. We wanted to ask the board if the provider for our lunches has changed or what exactly differs from last year's system and also how we can bring back the higher quality food we had at the high school.
We'll save that for after everyone spoke.
Hi. Another thing we discussed with Mr. Trumble this past week was recycling in our district, but the high school specifically. So we all know we have these trash bins and recycling bins, but due to a lack of responsibility from students, very often things get put in the wrong spots. And because quite reasonably, custodians don't have the time to filter through every single trash container in the school. There is going to wind up being a large portion of the recycling that ends up in the trash. And that's something that I think could be corrected because it's just, we feel it's a wasteful expenditure that is primarily on the students to change. So we talked with Mr. Trumble about that. He suggested talking to Scott Taylor, custodial supervisor, which we are going to be moving towards, hopefully drafting an email and getting some ideas rolling, possibly along the lines of clear labeling or maybe sending out reminders to the student body. We might not get everybody that way, but we could at least limit the amount of trash that's going in those recycling bins. We also talked about the vaping epidemic, which was discussed last board meeting, and how it's ravaging our school right now and our district, quite honestly. We tried discussing possible solutions, but the big issue that keeps coming up is that we are understaffed and have difficulty with enforcement. And as I'm sure you all know, whenever there aren't enough people to tell students not to do something, we go ahead and do it. So that's the biggest issue and this problem is bigger than us. So we're going to continue having a discussion with Mr. Trumble and we hope to provide you guys with updates. The final thing was weed in the bathrooms is perhaps an even bigger issue than vaping because it has assaulted our olfactory senses throughout the school, especially in the H building, where there are times of the day when you'll walk by H bathrooms and it's just overpowering. And it's true that it's very difficult to find ways to combat this epidemic, but we're hopeful that through some more conversation with Mr. Trumble and the board, we can try to come to, if not a solution, some ideas that can mitigate the problems that are in front of us right now.
Today, we had students do community service at Prisoner Express, Green Star, the Children's Garden, Public Library, and Bee Tree Nursing Home. This has been continuing throughout the quarter and it will be continuing throughout the year. Our projects so far have been Science Labs, the Civic Ensemble Theater Group, VR at Cornell, the Student Debate Club, and Upcycle Crafts and Projects, as long with other academic help. LACS is currently hosting the Aquasasini Freedom School and some members from it. Students will be traveling there in May. We've had this relationship for around almost 20 years.
Great. And I'm going to give a quick LACS democracy update. So our all-school meetings in the recent weeks have been bring back the footbook and having that revised and reprinted, as well as our board rep election process, which sounds funny sitting here, but we are about halfway through that process right now. We have nominations and candidates and they will all give statements at all-school meeting tomorrow. And then we will have our reps decided by Friday. I'm very happy with like how this process has been going. I've been a big part of making this happen and I'm really happy to see more than six people running so far. And I think a lot of that just has to do with making the opportunity known. And that goes right back to Zara, but communication and transparency has been a big conversation within our school recently.
Yeah, so recently, there's been a conversation that's been happening throughout LACS to have a school newspaper again. We used to have a school newspaper called OX Talks. I think it came out once a week. There's been a recent idea that was started by me and a couple of my friends to have this paper be online, kind of being short, digestible news, easy for students to understand from sixth to 12th grade. This can help the transparency issue throughout most of our school and also just communication in general. And also, all of you guys could tune in if you want to hear about us more. So I think that'd be kind of awesome.
Yes, definitely. Lisa met with Transportation and we've been continuing to work on getting all of our students to school on time. We've been making progress though. Few minutes better every day, so that's always a plus. We also had our PSATs today, which means it was a long day for me and Zara, but great opportunity. As well as fundraising, starting for both Katrina Relief and Spanish Trip. Me and Zara are both a part of Spanish Trip this year and are doing yard work. So if anyone is interested, feel free to find Zara after this meeting. And then I just wanted to voice our support of flying the Haudenosaunee flag and other efforts as well to continue to recognize and celebrate the history and present of the land we live on and benefit from, as well as the indigenous people of that land. I think that is it from us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Board responses. I guess I'll, I can address the, I don't want to say it the wrong way. I will give some additional information about the questions regarding food. That in August, the board had a presentation from the Chef and Foundation. I will be happy to send a PowerPoint presentation and send a link to the board video for folks to understand the changes that have taken place this academic year. I will also say that this is something that I am living with as my grandchild is a third grader at Enfield and is talking also about the food. And we know that change takes some time and so we are wanting to engage in that conversation a little bit further. And so what would probably be best is in that conversation a little bit further. And so, um, what would probably be best is to provide the information for folks to see what has taken place and what the rationale was before we engage in any sort of additional conversation about that, if that makes sense. Um, I will also say that to our, uh, L A C S students, first, yes, I want to see the art. Um, and second, more importantly, I'd be happy to give, uh, a thirty year old paper copy of my footbook. Should it be, should it be useful for, uh, moving forward? So there you go. Sounds good. Yeah, I, well, I actually have to get signed by Dr. Dave, so we'll, we'll go from there. Uh, I'll get it back, trust me. Yeah, yeah, this is, this is not a gift. Um, any other, uh, responses from board?
Recycle. Uh, it's been, I applaud and enthusiastically for any efforts to increase the compliance with recycling. And my experience, uh, not just in school and I taught in it and I have it for twenty five years and I always had a a recycling box in my classroom, but even, you know, out in the community and, uh, at Wegmans, uh, the bakery and other places, that clear, large, detailed labels about what goes where can really help people. And that if you could use the power of, you know, media to, you know, send that message to s- to students, you know, this is where things go, um, and to increase just the, the, uh, the, the, um, receptacles, uh, all throughout the school to make recycling easier. Like for instance, you know, I had a water bottle upstairs and and I was looking for where is a recycling bin or I can put this water bottle. Uh, didn't see any nearby, so, um, I wish I had more suggestions for the other, um, difficulties of baking and and weed smoking, but, uh,
I, I'd just like to confirm, um, it's the concert tomorrow, the collage, the fall collage. At what time? Seven thirty. So if no one has ever been to that concert before at Cult Auditorium, you get, um, the different groups, um, band, orchestra, choir together. It's a beautiful concert. It was on my calendar, but since I'm going to the convention tomorrow after evening, I won't be able to attend. So I'd just like to put a plug in because it's better than Carnegie Hall and we have right here in our backyard.
Where is this Spanish trip going soon? We're not a state. You're on out of state. I was just there. Yeah.
You can spend everywhere.
And I just want to clarify, we hope the Spanish trip will be going there. We'll be hearing a presentation at our next board meeting to give official approval for that Spanish trip. So I just want, yeah, uh, yes, I'm sure, I'm certain we will, but I just want to make sure the board knows that 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 presentation is coming our way soon. Any other board reactions, responses? Joe?
Yeah, I, I think for me, I was thinking about the, the smoke problem or the vape problem in the bathrooms. And I think we'd like to talk about that a bit of facilities, but one of my thoughts is are students looking for more enforcement or are they looking for better ventilation? And I know it's not necessarily an either or, but it would be something to think about as to what you want. Um, because we could go either way, probably. I would, I would think so, but who knows? You, you don't have to answer. You can think about it because we'll be talking about it further. I just, that to me seemed like an obvious direction. One is easy, the other is not so easy.
That is not to say, Claire, if you did have something to say, please do feel free to share.
Well, I was going to say, I think the students have accepted that, like, it's high school, like, people do it. It's like, it's become kind of a norm for, like, that to exist in our schools. So I think it's more about ventilation and like not being able to smell like the weed everywhere you go. So it's more about like the smell as to like trying to prevent people from using.
Although I will say that as I say this as someone who has never had a vaping problem, so I don't mean to downplay the level to which it is an addiction and it's not something I'm saying we need to brutally punish, but I do think one of the issues with vaping, smoking, really anything that causes damage to students' bodies and minds is that yes, we may have accepted at this point that that's the way it is and it's the way it's going to be, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's right, especially considering that these are things which could take lifelong tolls on students' health. And when those habits start early in high school, they're getting increasingly harder to break the older you get. So it's not just about helping those kids who, like us, maybe don't have that problem. It's about helping those people whose lives are being shortened by the year by every time that they use that.
So I think we'll take a multi-pronged approach. One could have a conversation at facilities about various ways maybe to mitigate some things. Dr. Brown, I believe that your student advisory council is about to be up and running or is up and running?
Yeah, about to be, yeah.
About to be up and running and maybe that's an issue that could be addressed there. So we get suggestions that may not a- a- address to us.
Very much.
Yes, fantastic, fantastic. Um, we usually do not call on folks from the audience, but hold, we've done it once before. So that's my point about it's going to set a precedent. Um, so, uh, feel free to email or contact us and we will definitely make that happen. But I'm interested in what you have to say as well.
Can I, uh, ask the students for something? I never know when this thing is on. Students, I offer you a challenge. Educate us about the current state of recycling. I know my colleagues hear the same thing I'm hearing that various economic factors in the value chain are significantly broken. Plastics are not going to where we think they are. Um, so it would, it would be helpful if you would, if you could do some research and present to us. As you've seen your colleagues do, that's what gets us to move, right? School us on what's really happening in the world of recycling.
And for, that may mean with Ithaca High School connecting with the Goat Club as well. I just saw signs. They did present to us last year. Uh, maybe it's time for another presentation. It may look differently at L A C S.
Yeah, um, so not speaking directly to your comment, but, um, just in terms of recycling as a whole, um, those little signs telling you where to put things, I think absolutely do help. Um, I think I've noticed we do have those at L A C S and I think I've noticed a difference, um, just because it's something extra for kids to think about. It's not, oh, all these bins look the same, whatever one's closest to me, whatever. There's more, um, thought and intention behind it. Um, so, you know, of course, there's more efforts to be put into that, but I think that, um, that might be a great start for Ithaca High School and starting to, um, bring some awareness to that and maybe have that done more successfully.
And Joe, that may be another thing that for us to discuss with Heather about what we're doing district wide at facilities. But it's a humble suggestion.
I agree.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you very much. We will continue with our agenda. If it works for the board, that brings up the consent agenda. Um, minus the minutes of our last meeting and, um, we will entertain motions.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Moved by Moira. Seconded by Adam. Questions, discussion? Yes.
Quick comment. In finance, we did talk about the fact that, uh, all of us on the committee are interested in seeing uh, where our money is actually housed and how much of it, because we have a S A T word, Panapoli of, of reservoirs now for our funds. And I did take a look at the treasurer's sport treasurer's report and it actually is in there, should you all be interested. Broken down uh, pretty and pretty and in good detail, but if that's not enough, then holler at your boy. We can get uh, treasurer to do something even more simplified.
Fantastic. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That then brings us to, uh, Dr. Brown.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity and I wish to invite Dr. Brian down because, uh, we were hoping to briefly share about our plan for recycling. So, uh, that works. Um, while he's coming in, I wish to also say, uh, thank you for the opportunity. I plan to accompany uh, Ms. Uwood and Ms. Lang to the New York State School Board Association event this week. Um, the lineup is going to be outstanding. It should be a great professional development opportunity in Buffalo this year. So I'm looking forward to being there. And, uh, thank you to the young people. I learned much tonight. As someone who's been, uh, smelling marijuana in high school bathrooms for the last forty years, I know this is a complex issue with no obvious solution. But I am, I'm committing to, I haven't heard the conversation tonight that we need to, um, have a community conversation about, um, how should I say risky behaviors? That includes, uh, illegal and and legal uses of substances. So I would hope that I, as part of this conversation, can facilitate a dialogue in our community about young people using these substances, because it has been going on for a long time. I remember Rob Ainsley sat in this room and talked about how there was a smoking section outside of Ithaca High School's cafeteria for a long, long time and he wondered when it was going to come back. I thought that was unique and the best comment at a board meeting until I heard ventilation versus education. So anyway, um, this is ongoing. I don't see a solution, but I do want us all to be educated, um, because I too have gotten tired of it. Me smelling it and I've been smelling it since I was ten years old. So with that, uh, Mr. Brian, Dr. Brian, man, about recycling.
Uh, thanks for all the comments. I just want to say that we are working with the green team right now and facilities are working closely with Scott Taylor and Stella. We, we are starting with, um, messaging. So I worked with communication and we have, um, we have a one pager that's going to go out to all of our schools to say what you can recycle and what you can't, which you cannot recycle. And we're just, uh, the communication team's been great with that. At the high school, Scott Taylor's been excellent with checking on rooms and finding out which rooms have recycling baskets for. And then we're gonna, we're gonna do a large order to make sure that we have enough. Uh, we've also met with Bosse's, T S D Bosse's. Alan, um, has, uh, started this week. Um, extra recycle pickups. He's added another drop driver for recycling. Um, so this is, we're in our pilot, pilot week right now, where, um, T S D Bosse's is at additional stops at, uh, at our elementary campuses and our mail truck is still picking up, uh, recycling. Uh, we're also working on, uh, drafts for composting as well. And that's another thing that will, that will follow as well. We'll be working with Cuba Composting. I'm providing bins for each schools as well. Right now, T S D Bosse's is providing compost pickup, pickups at all schools on Thursdays, but we need to, uh, work better in that area. But I just want you to know that these are things that are happening. It's in the works right now. Uh, we're really excited about our partnership with T S D Bosse's adding more, uh, pickups as well. Um, but just wanted to let you all know that and, uh, thanks so much for the comments.
Thank you, Dr. Brian. Why, my apologies, why we have you here. Could you also, uh, we just voted on it, but there was some conversation about um, how the school district, uh, gets rid of surplus equipment, right? Can you just provide, speak to that briefly if you could?
I can talk about some of the items specifically because I did a little, I, I was just checking on them. So on, on surplus right now, there's three pianos that are listed and, um, that was a request from the Fine Arts Department. And, uh, you know, the grand piano, for example, I don't know how much depth you want me to go into this, but the the grand piano, for example, would, would have taken twenty thousand dollars to repair to get it to work. We've had it, uh, looked at by the Ithaca Piano Rebuilders, who have said that uh, it's probably not worth it to move forward on that item. What we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with auction. We're now working with uh, international auction, um, company and we can, we can post that and see how that goes. The other two pianos, one of them was donated by the Fine Arts Booster Club, the Spindel Piano. Um, this is, uh, we, we are unable to tune this piano, uh, for, for a variety of different reasons. But we have a trained pianist who has given us feedback that it's not playable. That's another one that we'll, we'll bring up for auction. And then the upright piano has some of the similar issues as well. And, and I met with Daphne today as well. Um, she has a surplus, a surplus of pianos. She's had a lot of donate pianos, so she's okay. As well as you'll see the move, like, uh, another item will be the milk cooler. And that would be, um, an item that we were unable to fix through a variety of different ways and we'll auction that off as well. Uh, the, the, we, I also have a one pager that's going out. Um, so it's gone out to many of our custodians about how you can get rid of items. I'd be happy to share that with the board. It's, it's a, a flow chart basically, and it includes, um, you know, on one, on one side, it talks about what will bring to auction, but on the other side, it'll talk about what, um, can go to trash, but what can also go to recycle. And it talks about, it has points of contact, uh, as well, so.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Happy to send that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Brianman.
Yeah.
And a final piece, I hope to see board members tomorrow night at the class concert, but, um, also Friday night's homecoming game. Um, our administrative team are going to be doing concessions, so I will, I will volunteer to give every board member a blow pop if you choose to come to the concession stand. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to share.
Fantastic. Yeah, thank you very much. We'll continue with our agenda. Uh, that brings us to agenda item eleven point one, which is the Ju- Jewel Settlement Agreement. We tabled this, uh, this item for, uh, vote to gather some more information. And, uh, it is up for, uh, vote this evening and for additional discussion.
Well, I, I feel like when we saw this last meeting, there were a lot of questions about, you know, what, what are the implications of, of going forward with this or not going forward with this? So if we've got any more information to share, I will find that useful.
Uh, there was additional information that was sent out. If I, I hope all, did all board members get it? There were additional documents about how the financial settlement was arrived at, what the formula that was used, uh, where, who took part in the original, um, class action. Uh, and so there was additional information provided if, if folks, uh, got a chance to take a look at it. I'm not sure that it answered all of our specific questions, but it answered a number of, of them. Did we entertain a motion?
Uh, if nobody has any comments or any questions.
We can still dialogue after the motion.
I will, uh, motion to rat fire settlement agreement. Authorize the superintendent of schools to take any further action necessary to affect the settlement authorized herein. And eighteen rare assets.
Second.
Moved by Elbrud, seconded by Joe. Additional question, the conversation. Yes.
Sorry, I just had one quick question about the settlement. I remember last meeting, there was some talk about looking into what the exact provisions of the settlement were, because uh, I think Mr. Harris brought this up, but that they mention, uh, different stipulations that Jewel has to follow, like not selling within a certain radius of the school. Did anything like that come up that we, you guys looked into?
Yeah, we got a, uh, yes, is the answer that we got some of those answers to our questions. Absolutely. And I'm imagine these are documents that could be shared more broadly, so maybe we'll send them to this boardman as well. Additional questions, comments? Uh, this is not related to this, but it's a question for Dr. Brown and the board. Um, through our New York State School Board Association, uh, daily eclipse, all right, of news organizations and news stories that are happening around the state. I continue to see more and more New York State school districts jumping onto a lawsuit regarding uh, social media platforms. And I think it's a conversation that would, we should have at some point in time. Whether or not we join that lawsuit is not necessarily my focus, but just much more about what the lawsuit is. So it reminded me of this settlement as well. So it's just something I was thinking about.
Yeah, and we have been contacted by law, law, I know I have been, so I can, uh, engage those conversations, folks, and maybe set up a conversation with the board.
Fantastic. And maybe we'll put it as an agenda item just for discussion.
Yeah.
If there's no other discussion about this settlement, we'll call the question. Um, all those in favor? You got it. All those opposed? All abstentions? Fantastic. We will move on to our last agenda item and that is agenda item eleven point two, which is approval of the minutes of the October tenth board meeting. So we'll entertain motions.
I move the acceptance of the minutes of the October tenth board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion, debate?
I abstain. I was not present.
We'll call the question. All in favor? And we have one noted abstention. Fantastic. I hesitate to say this, good folks, that is our agenda. So with no more business items, we will bring the meeting to a close and we'll see folks at our committee meetings the first Tuesday of November and we will see. Oh, what?
Well, the first Tuesday of November is election.
That is correct.
We are in the process of trying to reschedule it to the, uh, H R and policy uh, committee meetings and so we are, uh, calling people to see their availability for other days.
Thank you for that, Moira. That's an important thing for us to remember. We have decided as a board that we would not have official board business during Election Day. Um, and so we are going to be rescheduling our next Tuesday committee meetings with more information to come out to the community, um, as soon as we can solidify those dates. So thank you. And so with that, we will bring the meeting to a close. Thank you, everybody.